The city council meeting is now in session. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Hughes if she will lead us in prayer and then the pledge. You'll please stand.
Heavenly Father, thank you for making it possible for us to gather here this evening. Thank you for the rain, and thank you for your continued protection over our first responders and our Kerrville community. We ask for your continued guidance as we engage in thoughtful dialogue and respectful deliberation tonight. Help us to work through you to the benefit of all our citizens. I ask these things in your son's precious name. Amen.
Can I make a comment before you start? I'm very hearing in pairs. I would appreciate if people can kind of speak up so I can get on.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Maybe we should pull our microphones closer.
We have our announcements of community interests. Stuart Cudges from the staff, if you would come.
Yes, sir. How's everybody doing tonight?
Great. Thank you.
All right. We have a bunch of stuff going on. We have, as we were talking about, everything's kind of picking back up. So if I can get my screen up here. A lot of activities going on, especially at the library. And there's a lot here, so I'm going to go through them pretty quick. Let you follow along on the screen. This week, we have Animal Tales and Tales with Kim Lehman. That's going to be tomorrow morning at 10:00 a.m., so drop by and check that out. Thursday, we have Lego Club in the library meeting room at 10:30. We need registration for that. And then Thursday afternoon in the library meeting room, we have Family Movie Playing With Fire. Of course, that's all free of charge, so check those things out. Next week, Kids Craft, that's Monday, June 14th, 10:30 a.m. And then Wednesday, June 15th, at the Cali Theater, we have Dinosaur George, which is always one of our most popular events. So be sure and bring the kids for that. And then Lego Club and Family Movie Sonic the Hedgehog next Thursday on the same type of schedule. So looking forward to that. A lot going on at the library. Not to be outdone is Parks and Recreation. We've got a lot of activities this weekend, starting with movies in the park, and we're really happy to have those going again. We start Friday, June 11th. We've got Frozen Two at Louise Hayes Park. Starts around nine o'clock or dark, whichever comes soon. Sooner, I don't know how many of y'all have seen Frozen Two, but it's the story of a princess living in Kerrville about four months ago. So be sure to check that out. Saturday morning, we have our annual Kerrville Skateboard Competition. We have a good turnout for that, but I would encourage more people to come. It's a lot of fun. It's a lot of high energy and a lot of action. Makes for some great photos. So y'all check that out. That's 10 o'clock at the skate park. And then Saturday night, everybody's invited. Grand opening, we're going to cut the ribbon for the River Trail, for the Shriner Extension. So really looking forward to that. And then afterwards, actually, we've got events going on all day up there at the Trailhead Beer Garden, which is opening at 11:00 a.m. Shriner has events planned all day long. They actually have their own trail that runs around the campus now, and that will be open for people to watch, too. So I encourage you to check that out. And then at 7:00, free concert at Texicon and Mama's. So encourage everybody to come on out. That's going to be a lot of fun. We've had a lot of interest in that on our Facebook posts. Expecting a pretty big crowd. Lot going on.
Really is. All right, I'm getting down a couple of these events. Any other community interest items from the council?
Mr. Mayor, I think Ashley should tell us what our lifeguards just, the award they just recently got. I thought that's cool.
Sure. But, you mean, Mayor and council, our lifeguards receive two operational audits each summer by our lifeguard training risk management company. We received our first last week, and I'm happy to report that they received the highest honor that they could. They exceeded expectations as far as aquatics risk management safety. They go through a bunch of rigorous skills. Auditor comes in and videotapes them unknown, and then they announce themselves and just test the lifeguard. So I'm very happy to report that they received high honors.
Good, good. All right, great.
Thank you.
Also, if you have not received yet your Parks and Recreation Activity Guide, this is a great guide. And I've got grandchildren here next week, and this is going to be helpful to know. Thank you. All right, we have some presentations to make. And if you would join me in front of the dice, and I'll call you up. First is Kerr Connect. And the Enterprise Holdings Foundation. Kerr Connect and the Enterprise Holding Foundation. Boy, they just keep coming. Yeah, no, that's great. That's great. All right. Good, good. You invited your drivers, and that is, and your board. All right, let me read this. Kerrville Kindness Award, on this date, June 8, 2021. Kerr Connect is an own-coalled volunteer driver service available to anyone over the age of 18, with an emphasis on seniors aged 55 and over. Kerr Connect's mission is to connect the Kerrville area community by providing safe and reliable transportation that will help citizens, especially seniors, maintain independence and enhance quality of life. The organization visions a Kerrville where citizens are insured transportation to destinations they wish to reach in order to live productive, healthy, and engaged lives. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to Kerr Connect and all its volunteer drivers for their commitment to serving a vital need in this community. And they have done it extremely well. And this is one of the founders. Mike, raise your hand. This is one of the other founders. I want to tell you, their planning of this was exceptional. Very careful, looking at the history of transportation in Kerr County, and they did a great job. Buddy, you want one like this?
I got it.
Yeah.
Mayor, I need one over here, too.
Oh, okay. There we go. One more.
There we go.
All right. And then connected to that is Enterprise Holdings Foundation Kerrville Kindness Award. The Enterprise Holdings Foundation is a philanthropic arm of enterprise that was established to allow the company to give back to the communities where its partners and employees live and work. Every year, Enterprise supports local nonprofits focused on community improvements, education, and environmental stewardship. Last year, the foundation gave away $57.5 million worldwide and donated 80,000 locally to charitable efforts that its fleet partners are involved with. The Kerrville Kindness Program offers a sincere thank you to Enterprise for its recent donation of $1,000 to Kerr Connect. Now, a representative from Enterprise, say what Enterprise is, because we're just referring it to Enterprise.
So Enterprise Rent-A-Car and all divisions.
All right, good. And I present you this from the city council. All right. Now, I would also like to mention that we have two members here, Karen Marquette and Christine.
Clema.
Clema. They are members of the Senior Services Committee of the city. And they have just received an award from ARP, American Association of Retired Persons, having shown to ARP the demonstration of this city for senior adults, but more than senior adults. And there are only nine towns or cities in Texas that have received this designation. And it means a lot, and it's just a good thing for Kerrville. All right, we got the pictures?
Let's get you two together. And three together right there.
Three, right here, okay. All right, come this week if you would.
Mike.
Mike.
No, no. Parents, but. All right, one, two, and three. And one more. One, two, and three. Thank you.
All right, good, good. Oh, okay. And now, we can't have long stories, but anybody want to make a comment?
We need more volunteer. To work in the office or to drive, it is the most flexible, rewarding volunteer opportunity in this town. It is great. It's fun. You meet these people, and they are so grateful. And some of them make me cookies.
Making cookies.
Making cookies.
Making cookies. Well, that's, that's great. All right, okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, all right?
Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Ken, if you would come up here, please. I see you. I see you.
Thank you for that group.
I know, I know. Ken McKinnney has served as a member of the Economic Improvement Corporation, the date of service beginning January 9, 2018. And whereas Ken McKinnney has served faithfully and dutifully on said board, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas. Ken McKinnney be recognized for outstanding service as a member of the Economic Improvement Corporation, and that on behalf of the citizens of Kerrville, as well as for ourselves individually, we wish to express our sincere appreciation for contributions to the city and the community. And this is passed and approved today's day. You want to say anything about your service on the EIC?
I see the EIC is doing a great job for the community, I think. It's a really good tool to fund some money in some ways. And maybe it could be, you know, the community's involvement by being a board member, you know, those of us who are involved. And so the city's had a good job bringing us good projects to look at, from River Trail to Kildere Mountain Manufacturing, to whatever. So it's a really great honor for me to be able to serve.
Good, good.
Very much.
And this is where the 5B sales tax comes back to the city, and then the city has the option of how that is spent. I probably shouldn't do this, but you're with a local bank?
Yes.
Which one?
Community First National.
Community First National, okay, all right.
Thanks for the plug.
All right, before you go, we probably need to do a picture.
One more, one, two, and three. Thank you.
All right, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken.
Okay, we come now to our citizens forum. This agenda is provided to allow citizens who have signed up ahead of time to address the council on any item not related to another specific item on the agenda. Do we have any speakers, Ms. McLennan?
Yes, sir, we do have four. Susan Brennan.
Okay.
My name is Susan Brennan, and I'm here to share something with you that's very, very important. And I appreciate everybody's eye contact when I speak, because when I taught my students that, in second graders, fifth and sixth graders, they all knew that you had eye contact to the speaker. There is a darkness slipping across America, a darkness so deep that neither lamp nor light can illuminate. A darkness of soul, a darkness of mind, a darkness of body. The light of love is slowly being extinguished, not by force, but by choice. By a choice to destroy the unborn, by a choice to deceive and deceive some more, by a choice of assault upon our freedoms, by a choice of dark literature to invade and plant seeds of destruction in our children's minds, choices to dim Americans' light of liberty, perversion of the fallest kind, hate of the blackest type, death's color is black. The high pathway to light is narrow. The masses choose the beast broad lane. The destroyer readies himself for the slaughter of a soul and more souls, of a mind and many minds, of a body and hundreds more bodies. The darkness of complacency, apathetic, habitual, and comfortable. Church is dying day by day. Though bodies and souls attend weekly, the spirit is gone from their midst. The darkness cannot be stopped or removed, like a virus of deadly strength. It comes, and comes, and comes. Only the hope of light exists, dimly available for ones not, quote unquote, "darkness-blind", a remnant, tattered and torn, grasp the rail of hope and light as the wind of darkness moans and blows, ceasing not, gathering of bodies and souls, gone. God gave me these words on Election Day, November 7, 2006, and I only had to type down the words.
Ms. Brennan, we do need your address, please.
Oh, I'm sorry. It's 322 Sparkman Drive.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Martha Hicks. I'm here on behalf of the Blue Bell Hills Community Bike Parade Committee. We were here a couple of years ago. We had a great parade. We expected eight kids. We had 200. And of course, we missed last year. We want to do it again, and we have the wonderful support of Trinity Baptist Church, our good neighbors, who have, you may remember, I've been here before. We worried about they were going to close the street. They have not closed the street. They have changed their plans, gone to a lot of expense to change their plans, and we're very happy about that. Anyway, they are working with us on the parade, and will even be supplying popsicles to all the participants at the end of the parade. We're looking forward to it. We have, two of our council people are residents of Blue Bell Hills, and we'll be seeing them at the parade, too. And our new place, one will be, and his family will be riding in the parade, Roman Garcia, and of course, Mayor lives there, too. So we're really happy about the parade, and this is the first announcement that we wanted to tell you about it, and I'll be taking the message to the papers. And I hope to have everybody out there wearing costumes. Get your kids to ride bikes, or whatever, push strollers, whatever. Get them dressed in costumes, fancy up to whatever they're going to push, or ride, or whatever. Just come out, and it's kids of all ages. You know, we want to have fun. We'll start at 9:30 in the morning. We're hoping the mayor will say a few words at the beginning, and then Reverend Wheat's going to say a few words, and then we'll get going. And hope to see you there.
Good, good. Thank you.
Oh, and it's going to be Saturday, July 3, not July 4.
And did you give your address?
Yes, it's 922 Cypress.
Thank you.
Okay.
That neighborhood, July 4 parade, has a real history. It's a lot of fun.
Bruce Stricki.
Bruce Stricki, 615 Earl Garrett. I had somebody call me last week and note that I hadn't come to speak in the public forum since we got back into the city hall chambers, and so I guess there's just need to shine a light. You know, the city council, and this city council, and former city council members who are out there in the community working on stuff have done so many things in Kerrville to make it such a great place. Recently, we've had events like Tides that just went on at the Trailhead Beer Garden, and that's a community project with Cuts and Jeremy and the council and city and everything. And we've got the farmer's market that's still going on on Clay Street at the old Shellhaste Mansion, which is, you know, working toward becoming the history site for us and our new museum. And it plays in the park. Playing the park was wonderful. And now we're switching to movies, but, you know, Two Gentlemen and Verona Fire, right? Wonderful, Shakespeare, in the park in Kerrville. The Southwest Gorge Show is about ready to start. That's an annual event at KACC here downtown. It's just, Kerrville just breeds wonderful, loving, community-centered things like this parade we just heard about. It's wonderful. You know, and there's so much stuff going on in the community, from a business side, and a real estate side, and a government side. And the best thing of all is that you all recently brought us a new city manager, and we are so excited to have EA Hoppy. And the community is reaching out and saying, what a great choice that is. Thank you so much for leading us so well. You're all doing a wonderful job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Susan Dunninger.
Susan Dunninger, 103, Turnberry Circle, Kerrville. After all those wonderful things, it's hard to be a little bit of a wet link it even. But I will say, broadening that bridge over the Sydney Baker is really, causes me concerned as I've thought about previous Fourth of Julys, and I've seen people hanging on the bridge watching the fireworks and everything, and I'm thinking, is that really where we need to put our money for our roads and streets in this town? I was looking at this fabulous Parks and Recreation Guide, and I thought, I'm going to go visit some of those fabulous parks. I went to Singing Winds. That serves at least 250 families around there with children. It's knee-high in grass. The only place in that area that you can go is the pool. So when, if that's where they're wanting to put the new aquatics center, for which we're spending $85,000 to study, I don't think it would be fair to say that nobody in the area uses it if they can't. So I just would recommend some of that money go to cleaning up that park so that those families can use it. The other one was, I think this is for the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone Committee to be paying attention to. Carver Park, on page 13, it closes at dark. And I remember last year and the year before, they had Juneteenth events planned, and they expected the city to have lights on for them after it turned dark, and they were in dark and had to go home. And that will happen this year. Only this year, they need to know that it says right on page 13 that their lights go off at dark. And I noticed, too, that there are one that cannot have a movie in their parks because they are closed after dark. And I'm just thinking, that's really an area that might want to take some consideration, and also, there are slides there. We now have some little umbrellas and things in places where families can sit that are just great. They're still burning their fannies on the plastic slides and all there at, there at Carver Park. And those are some areas that could use some extra money. I also, I have one minute. Listen, Lubbock is a sanctuary city. We need to be. Do you know that at seven weeks, doctors can take an intrauterine picture of an embryo screaming? And by eight weeks, by nine weeks, they can be pushing away and trying to get away from the saline injections. We also are doing, 41% of our abortions in Texas now are going to be chemical. And at the Austin hearings about chemical abortions, they were saying they're dropping their babies in the dorms at UT. I don't know about this, but our local resource center could sure use some help and some extra resources for those mothers who really don't want to abort their babies. And there's been one mother who has filed a suit because she didn't realize that her baby would be thrashing and screaming inside and hadn't known that in advance. That's it. And there is a doctor who says, if you just slit their throats, they can't scream, and if you cut their umbilical cord, they can't kick. I leave that picture with you. It won't leave me. Thank you very much.
We move now to the consent agenda. All of these items will be considered together unless a council member or a citizen desires that one of them be pulled. And I understand there's a citizen who's asked that we pull 4A. What that means is, we'll vote, and I want to pull 4E. And so we will consider all of them except A and E as a council, and then come back, and there can be discussion on those other items. All right, do I hear a motion in regard to voting on those and passing those other items?
I will move that we approve four consenting items, 4B, 4C, 4D, 4F, 4G, and 4H as presented.
All right, good.
Second.
We got a motion, second. All in favor, if you'd let it be known by the raised hand. Okay. Do we have someone to speak to 4A?
Yes, sir. Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, 103 Westchester. I had a question about Article 19 and 20 in this, where K4 is mentioned as verifying certain things and assurances on others. And yet, the signature on here is from High Five Events and a different board member or representative. And I'm wondering what the connection is between the two businesses. And also, will we get an advance, pretty good advance, on the route that the triathlon will take, and what will be closed or limited access?
All right. Ms. Boyle?
Yes, I can address those questions. That's simply a typo in the contract. That's carryover from the Fourth of July agreement. We will update the language of this agreement appropriately. As far as the route, that's made public. It hasn't changed since the past several years. It will be on our website. We'll issue appropriate press releases and social media posts with the route as it's made available.
What part was the typo? The whole thing, or both of them?
No, just in the very signature page.
Right, just including them both?
They're not in state Kerrville's 4.
Yeah.
K4 is Kerrville 410. It's a typo.
Is that clear, Ms. McKay?
I can hardly hear anybody.
Okay.
She just noted that it was a typo, and that it should have said between the city and the other?
High five.
Right.
See, right here, the signature's signed and agreed by the city of HFE, where K4 is in there, needs to be replaced with HFE. So it's a good catch.
There's no relation.
No.
Okay, and the route will be the same as it has been? Okay, and that info will go out? So, okay, all right. Okay. Is there any further discussion on A?
You know, I just, if there are any future typos, I just think it'd be good, council to get notice, whether it's before the meeting or at it, whenever it's noticed. That way, we can also be fully aware of what we're approving, in case of anything like that. But that's pretty much it.
That just happened, right, though?
But, you know, whenever.
Right.
All right, on 4F.
Do we want to approve that one?
What?
I'll move that we approve item 4A with the amendments to Article 19 and 20.
I'll second.
All right, got a motion, second. All in favor, raise hand. Okay, on the construction agreement with paving. I don't have objection to this, but here's the reason I asked that that be pulled. And Kyle's going to talk to us about this. But I hope people know, we really have had a significant effort on paving, reconstruction, and we are continuing that. And when you look at that amount, looks big, but that is just the nature of street and road construction. And so I think this is one more good step. Kyle, go ahead.
So I don't know if you have any specific questions.
I just wanted to add, Mayor, that when you look at the other bids, the amount that we're looking at here is significantly less. amount that, that we're looking at here is significantly less by a lot from the other bids that we got.
And that's actually why I thought you may have pulled it. We really caught my attention on that, especially the highs bid.
Yes.
Really large portions.
Almost 2 million.
Yeah, just a quick summary of what this project actually is. This is all the preparation that Streets Department has been doing in the past.
Speak up a little bit, Kyle.
This is in preparation of the crack seal on Slurry Seal Streets. So before we go in and put crack seal down, we want to go hit the major failure areas. Streets Department has been doing that in the past, but we want them to allocate their efforts elsewhere. And just, you know, this was the first time, so we wanted to kind of get a feeler out for what those prices would be. We got a really good competitive bid comparable to the engineer's estimate on the low bid. The others, we asked them, guys, why are you so high? This is, this is just a simple patching job. And I mean, we're, we're not doing much. And really, they went back and forth, this is materials versus, you know, the materials they, you know, got prices for. A lot of back and forth, basically, you know, we really didn't get any, any find-out answers on the elevated cost, but the low bid is really who we centered on and references checked out. They do a lot of work in the city of Kirby where they're located, and Kirby continues to use them. And other references checked out as well. And like I said, I think they were $10,000 off the engineer's estimate on this. Comparable, just to give you a cost estimate, the reconstruction streets that we do, two inches is roughly about $15 to $17 a square yard. This is about 21, 22 per square yard for three inches. And so that's what we look at, is how does that match up to what we've been getting in Kerrville? And that's, you know, their prices where we expected them all to be. And, you know, not, not the elevated, that the other three were, especially not the other four.
Yeah.
So yes, it is a little alarming, but again, the low bid is where we really wanted everyone else.
Yeah, and the next lowest bid is more, is double.
It's more than double. Yes.
But yeah, there's, there's only a difference between the high bid and the low bid of 1,366,202 and 60 cents.
Just, just pocket change.
But, but when we go with the low, low bid, you, you've said, hey, we've checked this company out, they do good work, good history, satisfied.
Right. Because we're not, you state agencies where we have to do the lowest bid. It's the lowest qualified bid. So that's, that's part of, you know, what we do from the time we get the bids in to the time we're, I'm standing in front of you, is we're checking references, making sure that this is a, you know, competent contractor that's gonna come in here and do adequate work for the citizens of Kerrville.
Okay, all right, good. Did, wait a second, I may have missed it. Is Hayden local?
They're in the city of Kirby.
Okay, okay, all right.
Somewhat local, being in San Antonio.
Yeah, yeah, all right. Let's entertain a motion on this if you want to, or do you have other questions?
I move that we accept 4E consent item as presented.
All right.
I'll second.
Got a second? Motion second. All in favor, if you'd let me know by the raised hand? Okay. All right. Let's move on then to public hearings. Ms. McLenon, would you lead that in?
Resolution number 27-2021, a resolution granting a conditional use permit to authorize a short-term rental unit on the property consisting of approximately 0.207 acres comprising lots, comprising part of lots 710 and 711, Block 101, B.C. Richards Edition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville and more commonly known as 222 Rosson. Said property is located within a single-family residential zoning district R1 and making said permit subject to certain conditions and restrictions contained herein. No one has signed up to speak, however, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, okay. All right. Oh, go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. This is a conditional use permit request for a short-term rental. This went to Planning and Zoning Commission on May 6th. It was approved with a 4-3 vote. Here's the site plan, showing that they do have adequate parking as required by code and the conditions of the conditional use permit. The conditions recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission is that the guest notification be required to show the, remind the guests that they are in a neighborhood and kind of formalize the house rules. They are required to pay occupancy taxes pursuant to Chapter 94 of the Code of Ordinances. If they choose to sign the property, these requirements are consistent with a home occupation in R1. Minimum off-street parking is one space per bedroom plus a required site for the off-site manager. Maximum occupancy of 10 guests, and then any other zoning regulations, of course, do apply. This is consistent with the Kerrville 2050 Plan since there is no change in zoning and is conditional use. And with that, please answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Any questions on this one?
Starting off with just the conditions, and then we'll move on to public hearing if nobody else does. The proposed conditions that are for this permit, those are pretty standard, right? Those are pretty much given to, for every other CUP that we've usually approved.
This list of conditions has kind of been built through comments from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Right.
Some of these are repetitious in the zoning code, so more just a notification to the applicant with their resolution as a reminder that these are conditions of the approval. Three of these conditions are in addition to the standard supplementary requirement in the code. The signage, the occupancy, maximum, the guest notification are not in the zoning code, but those have come out through research about other cities and conditions from the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
All right. The public hearing is open. Do we have anyone to speak to this matter? And it's 6:36.
Right here.
Yes, okay, Kim.
My name is Kimberly Richards. I live at 609 Earl Garrett. I also own 402 West Water and 604 Tyvee that I run as vacation rentals. I'm actually here to speak on behalf of my client, Laura Looster. She is out of town and didn't know about the meeting, so I apologize. But we wanted to address some of the concerns, I guess you received in a couple letters. We very much appreciate the concerns of the neighbors and we want to do our best to address them. We agree that we should guard the integrity of the neighborhood. We love it too, and that's why we bought here. Guests will be made aware of the house rules at the time of booking. It will be posted in the house. It's also online, and they're required to agree to it before they can book. Quiet hours between 10 a.m., I mean, sorry, 10 p.m. and 8 a.m. And we are happy to adjust these if the neighbors would like to work with that. Guest count will be limited to six people. It is a three-bedroom house. Guests will be asked to park only in the driveway and be respectful of the neighborhood. And the, the home has ample parking. It has room for three to four cars. No parties or additional guests will be allowed. Guests will be made aware of the children and the elderly in the neighborhood and will have to agree to the quiet hours, trash disposal, parking, and not having parties. In addition to the house rules, we will be replacing the fence and would be happy to make that at eight feet for both privacy and sound reduction on the right side of the property bordering the neighbor's home. The nightly rate will also be at a higher price point. This is something I have found in my own rentals. People are not willing to pay my prices unless they're gonna come, take care of the home, and respect the neighborhood that they're in. This attracts a much higher clientele and guests, those who will be respectful of our home as well as the neighborhood. We are happy to give our neighbors a personal cell number. If the unlikely event, there's an issue, we would address it immediately. The improvements we are making in the home, all-new electrical, all-new plumbing, restoration of the home itself will add value and equity to the homes around it. We will keep the lawn and landscape in excellent condition. Guests will also be required to agree to follow speed limits in the neighborhood. We also will be paying hotel tax to our city. A well-run vacation rental is a great way to introduce people to our beautiful city. They are often the first impression of our city. The goal is to make that introduction the highest level possible. We will have high standards both for our homes as well as our guests. Thank you.
Good, thank you. We have any other speakers to this matter? If not, at 6:40, the public hearing is closed. And any other discussion on council?
I've, I've got some, some questions. And, and Kim, I don't know if you're the one to answer them. How are you going to enforce some of these rules? I mean, they're great rules, absolutely great, but how do you, how are you going to enforce them?
I was gonna ask that too.
Well, the easiest way is if you, if you have a neighbor that calls you, is you immediately go over and address the situation. I have to be honest with you, in the almost five years that I've been doing this, I've never had a complaint, not once. And I do, again, think that that has something to do with the price point you're at. If you put a higher nightly rate on something, the guests that you're getting in there, the quality of guests that you're getting in there are very respectful. I've literally never had an issue.
Have you talked with the neighbor? We had two letters.
Yes.
And one was a lady that lived right next door with a 10-year-old boy.
Yes.
Have you visited with her about some of these things? Does she, does she have a good understanding of what you're willing to do and, and how you will handle things?
Well, oh, go ahead, go ahead, sorry.
Go ahead.
Well, Laura, like I said, is out of town, and so she was unable to be here tonight to call them up and talk with them personally and share what we've talked about tonight. But yeah, she has spoken with her when she first purchased the home and made her immediately aware of what the plans were. At that time, she was okay with it and apparently has some concerns now, which is why Laura is willing to do basically whatever she needs to do to comply with making her feel comfortable.
Well, I can understand. And I, I love B&Bs. I'm, I'm all for them, but, but I do understand that, and if you have children, that it's the unknown. You've got different people coming in all the time, and, and it's just hard to know exactly how they are going to behave.
Right. And I will tell you also, most of my neighbors interact with my guests along the way, and they've actually had really great interactions, like, why are you coming to our city? What can we refer you to? What can we recommend to you? I've got, one of my rentals, I have, well, both of my rentals have young children on both sides. Never had an issue with it. Again, people are very respectful. And I know one of the letters addressed a drone and some boom boxes. Is to my knowledge, as of right now, there are no vacation rentals in that area, so those are actually coming from the actual residents. So I'm not sure, I can't, I can't help him with that part of it, but those are actually people that live around him. There, it's not a rental situation.
I would really like to have, I really would like to have the neighbor have a conversation with you guys and, and have a better understanding and, and just feel much more comfortable about, about this.
She is planning on doing that as soon as she gets back.
Yeah, I, I looked at those concerns from the neighbors as well, and I took everything into consideration. I looked at and watched the planning and zoning meeting on, in May, and I requested, and according to our agenda packet, there was one email in opposition. I ended up finding out there were, there were two of them. And so I, I requested those, and I'm not sure if council also got those letters since I requested and got the response. So I was following along with you, and I was, I was looking at the email response. My question to staff would be, these emails, I think, were sent directly to the city, to Planning and Zoning, and one to Mr. Paxton. Were these forwarded, was the response from Ms. Richards forwarded to the people who asked the questions?
No, it has not.
It wasn't, okay. That would probably be something that we should probably do, just so they're aware of that as well to address their concerns directly from you. And, and I appreciate the extent that you've gone to make these house rules in addition to already the conditions that we're putting on the permit. I did have a question about how that was gonna be enforced. I was looking at.
Yeah, I think what Ms. Richards shared with us tonight, we need to kind of have in the file, but I agree with Ms. Garcia that this response to go to neighbors that have raised issues, I think, would be one more way to, to try to take care of some of those feelings.
Ms. Richards, I can pass that along to them?
Yeah, that would be great. She's perfectly happy to sit down with her.
Now, Drew, this is being a conditional use permit. It's conditional use. How and can that permit be revoked if it's not being used appropriately?
So if there, if we get repeat complaints, staff could bring that to council's attention.
And we can revoke that use? Is that what we do?
You could, but really, the first step would be, you know, trying to get voluntary compliance, and then we could.
Beating everybody on board, sure.
Right, and we could send, you know, do a code, code enforcement action and get them in. If it violates the CUP, then that's a violation of city code, and we could get them into municipal court.
And I guess that's my point is, you know, we can be living next door to a house that goes up for sale, and we don't know who the neighbor is that's gonna move in next door. Yes, there's more turnover here, but we have mechanisms in place that allow us to enforce the proper behavior and usage of the property, and there are remedies if there are problems. So by issuing this, we're not, this isn't necessarily the end of the process if something in the future comes up that's problematic, I guess, is my, is my point.
Well, and I see as the purpose of having a conditional use permit is to ensure that the conditions that are applied do help mitigate any of those concerns that are expressed. And I can see that that's been done here. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, just the, I mean, I have a, a house that a couple from Waco came and looked at this weekend, and the first thing they asked me was, tell me about the neighbors. And so you lose that when you've got people coming in and out every single weekend. And then the other issue I have is, you know, when people rent an Airbnb, they do so because they're on vacation, and they may be having fun or having parties or whatever, and say they violate one of the rules of the house. I suspect what would happen is they would call the police and they, they complain about the noise, and then the, the police would come out and, you know, tell them to turn it down or whatever, but suppose they don't. And then it ultimately goes to the homeowner that there was a violation and they never come back, you know, maybe, what, what, how do you, how do you protect the integrity of that neighborhood when you don't have control over what really truly goes on within that house? You can put signs up everywhere, but that doesn't mean that people are actually gonna follow the rules.
Well, that just goes back again earlier to what I said, that myself, as well as her and several of my friends that have rentals, have given our personal cell numbers to every single neighbor. If there is an issue, they can call us and we will immediately address it, which I think is the, the better way for them to handle that anyway than having to call the police on something. Also, just as a note, in the last year between two of my rentals, I've had 16 people come and stay that are looking to move to Kerrville. They're all between the ages of 25 and 38. So it's not just vacation. We get a lot of people, traveling nurses, traveling doctors that are coming in, James Avery's people, I've got one there for a month, you know? So it's also other businesses in town that we're supplying a need for. So it's, it's, yeah, it's a little more than just vacations.
You know, I think one of the things.
Yes. We do also take security deposits on all of the properties, so if there's any damage or they exceed the noise level, the parking, any of those issues, we can keep that deposit.
You know, to me, one of the issues here, after we've heard the discussion so forth, if we You know, to me, one of the issues here, after we've heard the discussion so forth, if we turn this down or table it, does it really say the city council does not want short-term rental units in Kerrville? I'm very sensitive when we deal with the zoning issue or other issues. I wanna know, okay, any, did any neighbors complain or whatever else? And, you know, I wanna see these folks who have complained, I want them to, you know, I wanna see that they get happy with this. But I think it's a precedent we need to watch. Because where are short, short-term rental units? They're in neighborhoods. You know, you look at the one that we approved over on Guadalupe, what, eight different units? So I've got that concern.
Well, my, my concern right now is that I, I wish that a conversation had taken place with the neighbor. And I know, and I, I appreciate.
Sorry, we just found out this morning.
But I, I appreciate everything that you guys are going to do. I think that's great. I just, and I'm all for, I said, I'm all for B and, Airbnb's. But I just wish that the neighbor, that I knew the neighbor was more comfortable and, at this point. And I've had a conversation this week with someone from Fredericksburg. They have 700 Airbnb's up there. And they don't have in place some of the things that we have. And, and they've, they've got, they've got some issues.
They do, they grew fast.
And they're becoming much more popular here. And we are allowing them in the residential areas, which I think is great. If you're staying someplace, that's a great atmosphere. My, my concern just simply is that I just wish this neighbor knew that these were the things that could be done for.
We will be addressing that as soon as possible. Also, so you know, my understanding is, right now, we have over 450 active vacation rentals within Kerr County. And that says a lot. They've been here, we've had 350 of them that were here for years. And in the last two years, yes, we've grown, but, but almost no issues, almost no issues. And people come back over and over and over. I've got guests that have stayed with me 15 times, you know. They're great, and they love our city. In fact, they did a feature on one of mine in that magazine, Rock and Vine, right in front of you. They highlighted Kerrville and all it has to offer. And so I think we miss an opportunity, as long as we're not having issues. And if you do have an issue, then address that personal issue. Don't make it something that we never do because there was one issue here.
Okay, I move that we pass 5A. Is there a second?
I will second that.
We have to.
Okay, Ms. Agner. Any further discussion?
I, I would just like to bring up something about standards and, and the procedure for approving CUPs in the future. I would really like to have this council probably sit down and, and look at what standards are we gonna apply to conditional use permits for short, short-term rentals, as is in this case, in the future. That way, we are always consistent with what we're doing. I'm not saying council hasn't been, but hypothetically, a neighbor could come in and wanna do the same thing adjacent to this property. And whether council wants to do it or not, we, I would like the council to have a standard for.
And I, and to speak to that, Rumen, I, I, you know, I go through the same thought process when, when I'm, when something is, was, is uncomfortable or is different. And, and I, I find comfort in having those standards as well. So I kind of thought through that too. And I kind of just, in my thought process, came to the idea that these are all very, they, they just have to be considered separately for different reasons, for different circumstances. I mean, I just can't find that there's a set criteria, and if there was a set criteria, then it wouldn't need to come to council anyway. Right, I mean, it would be check the box, and if it checks the box, then go on about it. And I think that's the unique nature of a conditional use permit, is you have to take the totality of the situation into consideration, which makes it uncomfortable sometimes, and maybe even a little difficult when you're trying to figure out how you feel about something. So I do understand that. But I, I just, I, in my thought process, I just don't see that trying to apply a rigid set of criteria is what we, what we're trying to get at in this process.
I, I would say what Mr. Garcia raised says to me, I would like to visit some more of the city manager, just so we get clarification. May not be a matter of changing it, but getting clarification for all of the council. I think we have had that, but it's worth going back to.
If I may, we do have that exact topic on our list for things to consider at our next review of the zoning code. Are there other conditions that we should recommend? Should they be codified, where there are requirements versus a condition that's case by case? And comparing to several other cities across the state, just looking at Fredericksburg is one, they have an inspection process, but they don't have a public process. I'm just trying to weigh those options. The conditional use permit is case by case, but we do, we as staff do recommend standard conditions for similar cases. We can obviously add, add more or less, depending upon what the situation is.
So you're talking more about what conditions are placed on the use, or more about how that decision is made, whether to allow that use?
Kind of, kind of both, putting both of them together, because, and I'll hold it just for visual purposes, but I looked at the most recent CUPs for short-term, short-term rentals since the new zoning code was adopted. And so I looked at all those, and that's when I asked you, these are pretty much standard conditions. And I feel that if we can codify that and say, this is what, it's gonna be the standard, and make it almost a right of the property owners to be able to do that with these, with these conditions in place. Rather than having to go through this process and leave it, leave the decision up to be subjective on whether or not.
Yeah, but let me just throw this out there, cuz I thought about that. So what if, what if you run into a street where every single home except for one wants to be a B and B? Is there some, is there some threshold where you go, you know? I don't know. And then that's an uncomfortable question, right? But, but if you just have a checkbox, sometimes it doesn't address maybe some other things that, you know, need to maybe factor into that decision. Now, what you're saying about codifying the uses, I, I like, but.
Well, I think this is something we could address later with you guys. And with, in, in relationship to this, I, all, what, all I'm asking is just talk to that neighbor and, and just let us know she's comfortable and, and bring it back.
Well, yeah, and, and I mean, I know you, we've got a first and a second on this issue, on this motion. But I don't feel comfortable voting for it until, there's a reason why we send letters out, okay? And, and when people send letters back in protest, I think we have an obligation to resolve those before we vote yes.
I'm just gonna throw out there that I will vote for it, and the reason I'm gonna vote for it is because those letters were sent out and there, this is a public hearing and an opportunity for anyone with questions or issues to come forward and speak. So that's how I, my vote's gonna, that's how my vote's gonna go.
And Councilor Hughes, would you be more comfortable if the motion also included the fact that those were going to be done and council had instructed staff to do that?
I would.
So Mayor, that we have a motion on the table, right, to approve this?
We do. No, the motion on the table right now is to postpone it.
Oh, it's to postpone it?
Oh, to postpone?
Yes.
No.
No, it isn't.
It was to approve.
No, he made a motion to approve.
I made the move to approve 5A.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, he did.
I didn't understand that either.
I didn't, I didn't say postpone.
No, he, he made a motion to approve.
I think the motion, the confusion may be that the motion was to pass. And so the mayor may wanna clarify whether, when you said pass, if you meant approve, or because it's, the second.
Do we start, withdraw all motions?
I'll modify my motion. The, I, my motion is that we approve 5A, okay? Now, what was just mentioned is that we also instruct staff to follow up by getting information to the neighbors. And that the owner of this unit talks to neighbors as well, okay?
Could we have in the motion to also have council look at setting these standards or, or having some type of work.
No, let's don't add to the motion. I've, I've already said that I, I wanna talk with the city manager. We'll come back and look at CUPs as a council, see what we need to do. So I don't, we need, we don't need to add it to this motion.
Okay, Ms. Agner, you did second. Did you wanna go ahead and second this?
No, I need to withdraw my second.
Okay, I'll second. I'll second.
How did we, how do we, I said approve 5A. What happened?
I'll make, I'll second your motion.
Okay, we got a motion second. All right, any further discussion?
When are we gonna look at doing the, the zoning code?
We will do it, we'll do it, Mr. Garcia.
Can I make one comment? When y'all do go to look at this, just as a, a note, that the vacation rental industry overtook the hotel industry a year and a half ago. And it's become people's preferred way of traveling. So that's just something to note as you move forward in how you're gonna set this out. This industry is not going away.
Yeah.
And it brings money to the city. I pay my taxes every single month.
Yeah.
So.
Hey, Bill, can I, I didn't sign up to speak, but I'm.
We're out of the public hearing, Mike, I'm sorry. Okay, we got a motion and second. All in favor of that motion to approve 5A with those conditions, let it be known by the raised hand. And we got 4-1. All opposed, the like sign. Okay.
And before we move on, I'd still like to get my question answered. When are we gonna do that review?
Well, so that's on items for future agendas, because that doesn't specifically deal with this agenda item. So when we get to items for future agenda, maybe that'd be a good time to.
Okay.
No, I was saying, Mr. Paxton said that we were going to review the zoning code later.
I don't have a date for that.
Okay, good, that's fine.
It's usually every six months, is what we had previously been instructed by council to look at.
All right, would you read in 5B, Ms. McLauren?
Resolution number 28 dash 2021, a resolution allowing a variance to a distance requirement as between the restaurant located at 208 Cooley Drive and childcare facility located within 300 feet of said restaurant. We do have three people signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Yeah, all right, Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. Pursuant to section 10.3 of the City of Kerrville Zone, or Code of Ordinances, excuse me, China Bowl has requested a variance for their new application. They currently hold a TABC license for a mixed beverage permit. Since that, that license was issued in 2017. Since then, city council has updated the chapter 10 and included childcare facilities as a protected use and requires that separation, which is property line to property line. As you can see on the map, we're talking about the, I'll call it the western corner of this property to the eastern corner of the church is within three, or less than 300 feet. If you were to measure door to door, this is closer to 15 or 1600 feet, following the streets and sidewalks. So state law does require that separation as 300 feet, property line to property line. Whereas other entities such as, if it were just a church, it would be measured door to door. The restaurant has held a liquor license since 2017, but they are updating to a different permit with TABC, to a beer and wine retailer's permit. So that is considered a new application, so we're before council to review that variance.
All right, council, do you have questions or comments?
So they're really actually getting, their license is being changed, but they can serve liquor now, and they just wanna serve beer and wine.
That's right.
That is correct.
That's what we're dealing with here, right?
Yeah, they wanna reduce their permit.
Right.
From a liquor license to just a beer and wine certificate.
And because they're grandfathered under the other one, that's why they're allowed to keep that. But if they wanna do less, then they have to come and get.
Because it is a new application, it's required to come to council.
Okay, just making sure it's clear.
Yeah, if they were just renewing their mixed beverage permit, it would not be before council.
Okay.
Was the, was the church approached at all in any way about this?
They did get notice. Our, our code requires notification within 200 feet, similar to his own case. So you can see the, the buffer area there. All those property owners were sent a notice of the public hearing and of the liquor license that was being, or the TABC license that was being requested.
And to date, no comments from anybody?
No comments.
Okay.
I talked with some of the leaders at the church, and they were not aware of it. They had, did not know that if, if a letter went, I would, don't know where the letter went, because the, the leaders I talked to did not know about it.
I can check and follow up and show you the mailing address from Kerr County.
But they are okay with it. It's not going to be a problem, so.
Okay, any other questions, council? All right, at 7:05, we open the public hearing. And speakers can speak to this issue.
Lee Lahung, and I don't know if I.
Do you have to go back to the restaurant?
Oh, okay. Blaine Black?
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, yeah, thank you for being here.
Jamie Flores?
I don't have anything to add. And y'all represent the restaurant?
Okay. 7:05, the public hearing is closed. Is there a motion in 5B?
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 28 dash 2021.
Okay, all right, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, second, Ms. Agner. All right, all in favor, if you'd be, if you'll raise a hand? Okay, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thanks. You know, you got a Baptist preacher approving liquor licenses.
It's just wine and beer, mayors.
Yeah.
Oh, wine and beer, wine and beer, that's, that's. Well, it's a slippery slope. All right, 6A, would you read that in, Ms. McLauren?
Ordinance number 2021 dash 14, an ordinance annexing an approximate 149.519 and 2.775 acre tracts of land, both located within the Comanche Trace Residential Development into the city of Kerrville, Texas, and extending the boundary limits of the city so as to include such property within the city limits. Approving a service agreement for the annexed property and approving the zoning for the annexed property is a medium-density residential district R2. And we do have one citizen speaker signed up, but this is a public hearing.
Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, council. This is an annexation of approximately 152 acres with two tracts. There were 50 which mailed out. At the time, these, these comments were written, which was prior to the planning and zoning, we had not received any letters. Between planning and zoning, getting their packet and P and Z, we did receive one letter, which I believe you guys got yesterday afternoon. Staff did respond to that, as far as staff could respond, a lot of those questions dealt with the Comanche Trace development and their future, future plans. This is consistent with the Kerrville 2050 plan for the annexation and strategic catalyst area 10 for preservation residential. And of course, the adjacent land uses, parts of Comanche Trace are zoned PD, which includes golf course R1 and the equivalent of R2 by today's code. Other areas are zoned R1 and R2, depending upon which phase they were developed in. There's the, showing the strategic catalyst area, does overlap into the outer edge of that, but that's the preservation residential, consistent with the development. And Planning and Zoning Commission recommended the case unanimously with, on day 6. Be pleased to answer any questions before or after the public hearing.
Did the gentleman who asked the questions, did he get his answers?
As far as the one specific to the development, I'm not sure. I believe he reached out to Comanche Trace's office, but I don't know if he, if they had a conversation or not. As you saw, many of the questions were, what are the lot sizes? And what are the phasing of the development? What are their plans for some of their golf cart trails and such? Obviously, staff doesn't have all that information, so.
Well, one of the concerns that was expressed in that letter was that he, quote, "It appears it will affect the backside of my property." Will it?
No, it will not. This is up to their fence line. I think we frequently get confusion with the map showing the buffer area.
Yeah.
That line obviously does cross their property, and that's the reason they get the notification. It's not uncommon for us to get a question asking, why is that line into my backyard, or whatever the case is? Obviously, their, Comanche Trace is staying within their property line. There is a future phase planned adjacent to this neighborhood, but I can't speak to when that, when it's timed and planned.
But just to get on the same page, when they get a notice, I guess they also get an image as well as what?
That's right.
So that's probably where his response or question came into place.
That map looks similar to this one. This one has the buffer district, obviously.
Right, okay.
So they'll have a map showing the entire annexation in that 200-foot buffer for the notification.
Yeah, we have it.
Yeah, okay, in terms of that concern of a homeowner there, he backs up to land that is Comanche Trace land. Which you would assume, you would understand, that might someday be developed. So I mean, we can't really guarantee a home. So I mean, we can't really guarantee the homeowner that he's going to have vacant space behind him.
Right.
Yeah, okay. All right, other questions or comments from the council?
Could I just get a copy of the response that was sent?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. The public hearing is open at 7:10. Here? Yeah, go ahead.
Can you just open the public hearing just now?
Yeah.
He just now opened the public hearing.
Well, I'm sorry, I thought you were closing.
Oh, no, no.
Opening it.
Should I sit down?
No, it is open. It's for you, sir.
All right, it's for me, all right. This is something I brought up about three years ago in city council, and I didn't ever hear a resolution to it. And I think it has an effect, the reason I bring up this subject, which I'll explain in a minute, is I think it should affect whether this annexation is done tonight because of some, possibly some unfinished business. In the original agreement, development agreement with Comanche Trace back in, I believe, August of 1999, it called for Comanche Trace to deed to the city two water wells that are on that property and also 50% of the water rights that Comanche Trace owns on the Guadalupe River. Those are senior water rights, by the way. I brought this up at meeting, I think Mr. Hayes told me, or maybe it was in an email from him afterwards, that this is being worked on. And I know there was a new agreement that's just been, still being worked on, or it's been passed, I don't know the status. That agreement was good for 20 years, so it's, it was time for a new one, what, a year or two years ago? But anyway, this outstanding issue still resides. Comanche Trace has, again, as far as I'm aware of, has not deeded any of these entities to the city of Kerrville. And I don't see how y'all could proceed forward with this annexation until Comanche Trace fulfills their obligation to the city.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have other speakers? All right, Ms. Hayes, can you shed any light on that?
Right, so the water wells and senior water rights were part of the original development agreement in 1999. There, there were conditions on the senior water rights and that, those conditions have never been, and if I say something out of line, Mr. Hoppy, just let me know, those conditions have never been reached, and so we, we don't have a right to the senior water rights, and it's my understa, and then, then the water wells are such that they would actually become more of a liability for us to receive at this point in time than otherwise. And all of this was captured in the most recent development agreement, or amendment to the development agreement that we went through. And as you can understand, so in 1999, we sit at, we, I wasn't there, but sit at the table and we negotiate with the Comanche Trace development over certain things and aspects that we, both sides want. And after 20-plus years, those things may change and be reassessed, and that's what we've done in the development agreement. And I think, you know, the final thing I'll say is, I think both sides are very pleased with the way the development agreement has worked. Certainly, Comanche Trace is a premier residential development, not only in this area, but the state, and so, but that, that's all I need to say about that.
All right.
Mr. Wolf? Can I make one more comment? How come this issue was not brought to city council? Because that was a, a contract.
It was, it was.
There was a contract.
Right, it was.
And those were terms of that contract. And if I remember correctly, about the water rights, it had something to do about the city of Kerrville furnishing irrigation water to Kerrville as a condition. And I don't know what the few other terms that go with that, the subterms to that agreement about, the city has furnished irrigation water and did it many, many years ago. So it sounded like, and I think I looked into it, at least my memory is telling me I looked into it, and it wasn't much the city had to do to fulfill that irrigation clause about be able to get the, the senior water rights. But since that contract was not fulfilled, that issue should come to city council, should it not? And for city council to debate it and the people of Kerrville be aware that that, those terms that Comanche Trace agreed to, that city council agrees and the people of Kerrville know, that they're now, that they all in agreement that it can be ignored.
Well, no, and I would dispute the fact, or your contention that it's been ignored. It's, the, the agreement, if, if memory serves, and I'll, you can put that up there too, I think the agreement's been amended seven times, each of those amendments has come to council. The last amendment took many months to go through and work through, and we actually brought that issue back to council probably three or four times before it was ultimately adopted. And you, you all, I don't know, certainly Mr. Garcia wasn't here, but I don't know out of, and Mrs. Hughes wasn't here, I don't think, but that agreement came back to council, that amendment came back to council.
That that term of the contract would be deleted?
Well, it was revised, right, right.
Can you send me a copy of that?
We can.
All right, thank you.
If you'll get, actually, if you'll get with the city secretary tomorrow and submit an open records request, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd also like to get a copy of that too, please, since I wasn't here.
All right. Any, okay, are there any other speakers to this item? If not, at 7:16, we close public hearing on that matter. Is there a motion on 6A?
I move that we approve ordinance number 2021 dash 14 on first reading.
I'll second that.
All right. Okay, any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by the raised hand, and it passes unanimously. All right, 6B, Ms. McLean, would you read that in?
Ordinance number 2021 dash 15, an ordinance amending chapter 60 Code of Ordinances, City of Kerrville, Texas. Chapter 60, more commonly known as the city zoning code, by changing the zoning of a property known as 601 Spur 100 and consisting of lot 2R, block 1, of the Freeman Fritz addition, a subdivision within the city of Kerrville, Kerr County, Texas, from a public and institutional zoning district PI to a residential mixed zoning district RM, providing a cumulative clause, providing for separability, providing effective date, and ordering publication. And we do have one speaker signed up, however, this is a public hearing.
Yeah. All right, you're still up there, Mr. Paxton?
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor. This is a request to rezone the property from public and institutional to residential mix. The applicants also have a pending request for a conditional use permit for an RV park as part of their development. Kind of a two-step process for the zoning in place first, and then the conditional use permit will come back to you in July.
Wait, what's, the, the conditional use permit will come back for short-term?
Yes, or no, sorry, for the RV park.
RV, all right.
This is consistent with the Kerrville 2050 Future Land Use Plan for recreational and outdoor agriculture uses. Residential mix being consistent with that description, and the RV park even further for the outdoor tourism. Here's the site plan. Again, this is really more tied to the conditional use permit, but it is part of the project. Wanted to make sure council had that. And Planning and Zoning Commission did approve this with unanimous vote for both recommendation on the zoning and the conditional use permit on May 6th. Let me please to answer any questions before or after.
This was the former VA Dogs site, right?
That is correct.
Okay, all right. Okay. Questions, council? I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, I'll point out with that, when we did, redid the zoning in 2019, VA Dogs was still on the site, which is why it was zoned public and institutional, since they were a nonprofit organization.
Yeah.
As you can see, Freeman Fritz is zoned C2, adjacent property, and the property on the other side is zoned RM. So the RM zoning request is consistent with the area.
Okay. Questions, council?
I would like to acknowledge the concerns that were raised at P and Z meeting. Some of the concerns, at least as my memory serves and as noted here, there's a flooding concern and a privacy concern. I understand the flooding concern isn't exactly something that council can do directly with this, with what we have in front of us. But I just want to clarify, is there something, and I know it's because of the, the solar panels in that unit back there, that K-Pub is buying energy from? We, they are looking at doing something with that, right?
And I had, because I had a great conversation with the city manager on Monday about the very same thing.
Yeah.
Would it be okay if, if Mr. Hoppy kind of relays what we, what we talked about in our meeting?
Sure. It, it's certainly not pertinent to the zoning question, but there were drainage concerns that were expressed at that P and Z hearing. It is an item that we've been working with K-Pub and their contractor for a number of months. They have submitted revisions, they made revisions to a previous plan that was stamped by an engineer, they have made several iterations of additional revisions, and, and they have a set of revisions right now that are being currently reviewed. So we have every intent that, that contractor will be held accountable, and K-Pub intends to hold them accountable to make sure that drainage concerns are alleviated. But again, that, that's not part of the zoning hearing today.
Well, and I even understand that probably, I think, people who are buying the property were even considering doing something to try to.
Oh, yeah.
Fix that flooding, at least for their, their side of the property, is that right?
They've been a part of those conversations as well.
Please, if you, if you don't mind.
I'll wait.
Okay. Public hearing isn't open yet.
Yeah. All right, we ready to go to the public hearing? Okay, it's 7:21, we're in the public hearing.
Pablo Brinkman?
Pablo Brinkman, 39, 28, Oak Park Drive, council, mayor. Mr. Roman, how are you?
Good, how are you, sir?
Uh, living the dream. So my clients, I represented Veterans Assistance for Dogs. I sold the property. My clients are here, the ones that bought it, they're the ones that we went before P and Z for, for the, for the zoning to RM to allow us to do this, and also the Cup. To, to your concern and question, we, we've escalated it now to the, to the right level. I've been on site with Charlie Hastings, I've been on site with Mike Whitler, we've, Nextera, I talk to them almost daily. They are very accountable, they realize that they have an issue there. I've raised more concerns about it, we're working with staff. What it boils down to for my clients, and to make this whole project work, is going to be to do, to give a 20-foot easement to the city. So I'm dealing with a landlord, which is the city, that has this, and so we're working on that, and I'm negotiating on behalf of my clients with Nextera for different reclamation's, berming, vegetation, et cetera. And so I'm in the process of getting bids turned in from them, so my clients, because in essence, what they're doing is giving .18 of the acre to allow for the city. And I'm going to come, I've talked to Drew a little bit, I'll probably come before ZBA and ask for a variance. I'll have to recuse myself because I'm chairman of ZBA, but, and I, and we're trying to find out if I can submit, but what we're going to look for, Mayor, is to ask for a setback variance of five feet versus 20-foot if we do ever develop in there. If the slide that Drew had up before, we have cabins in that corner, if, if that was page north, that, that northwest corner, we're going to have cabins up there. And we're just, we're excited about it, staff's been, worked, I've met with Kyle and Drew and everybody. So we think that we're going to get to it. Nextera is being held accountable, they know. You know, K-Pub's just a client. It's, K-Pub doesn't have anything, they didn't do anything wrong, they're just buying the energy. And if they don't buy it, you know, Mayor Blackman can't buy it, so they're going to really do whatever's needed.
I put in a bid.
Well, yeah. You may get, there's a lot of, there's a lot of solar panels up there you could use, but power your car. But, but we feel like it's, it's, it's been escalated since P and Z and that all players involved are, are working to make it work, which will help the contiguous landowner, which was.
Correct.
Thank you, Pablo, I think you're going above and beyond.
And you prefaced your appeal to ZBA.
Well, I mean, I, we're trying to figure out.
How does that?
Yeah, I know, I know.
What I can do and not do.
I know, yeah. Okay. Any other speakers to this matter? Okay, it's 7:25, we're out of the public hearing. And do we have a motion and second?
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance or approve ordinance number 2021 dash 15.
A second.
Did you have something else?
He said a second.
I second.
Okay, you got a second, okay.
I told him he had to be fast in this crowd.
All right. All in favor of 6B, raise your right hand, and it passes unanimously. Ms. McLean, would you read in 7A? And this is a second reading.
Ordinance, ordinance number 2021 dash 13, second reading, an ordinance amending the city's fiscal year 2021 budget to account for the disbursement of additional funds, the receipt of additional revenue, and make other amendments as provided herein. And there are no speakers signed up.
All right, okay. Ms. Dozier?
Good evening, Mayor and council. This is second reading, and we did discuss this amendment in detail at your last meeting, so don't have anything new tonight. I did want to note just one minor change. The attachment A has been amended, there was a $32,000 purchase for EMS equipment, there was a grant received for that. That purchase was accidentally listed twice on the amendment, last time that's been removed, and it's just shown as being purchased one time.
Okay, all right. Council, discussion?
I just have one question. Uh, when, when looking at this, I, I noticed that we are kind of mid-year in a budget amendment, too, we're capturing sales taxes to put in this. And, and I'm just not sure, but I don't recall us doing it this year, and we still have a possibility of the revenue ending up less than projected? So could, could you just clarify why, why we're doing that?
It is possible that we could end up lower than budget, it's very improbable at this point in the budget year, given that we're this far along. If we didn't show the additional revenue, then you'll be approving, basically spending down fund balance for additional expenditures. And I wanted to emphasize to council that this is not asking for a reduction in the fund balance, or spending down of the fund balance, because we do have much better than expected revenues at this point in the year, and so much so that I feel comfortable allocating a portion of those to actually increasing the budgeted revenues at this point.
Got you, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt ordinance number 2021 dash 13. I'll second.
Got a motion second? Should we attribute the extra revenue to the director of finance?
No.
I'm kidding.
Who said no?
All right, all in favor of this motion, let it be known by the raised hand.
Keeping us out of trouble.
All right, yeah. Okay. The, what about future agenda?
I would just like to add that one that I was discussing earlier about council, looking at having a workshop session, or whether it's at a regular meeting, looking at setting some standards or codifying the conditions that we usually put on our conditional use permits for short-term rentals.
Okay, all right, good. Okay, if there's nothing further, and I did this last time, but I'm going to do it again, you see the staff back there on the back row? I have found they're generally well behaved in these council meetings, and we need to keep expressing appreciation. All right.
Thank you.